Good afternoon. It's good to see each one of you, all of you looking good today. I'd like to have a roll call, Ms. Micas.
Mr. Como.
I'm here.
Ms. May?
Here.
Mr. Beatty?
Here.
Mr. Hicks?
Here.
Mr. McCoy?
Here.
Mr. Graves?
Here.
Mr. Manley?
Here.
Today we'll have a West Monroe High School Junior ROTC to do our color presentation. It's under Lieutenant Colonel Hart. Lieutenant Hart does my list of students' ROTC programs that come each month, and I'd like to thank him. Thank you, sir. Also, we have our invocation being led by Alexandra Dix. She's President of West Monroe High School Senior Class and District Eight, President for the State of Louisiana Association of Student Councils. So, thank each one of y'all for coming. If you'd like to stand for the pledge, led by Mike Beatty.
Cards, up. Carries. Colors. Forward. Hearts. Cards. All. Present. Hearts.
Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Forward. Hearts.
Would y'all please bow your heads in prayer. Dear God, I thank you for today. Lord Jesus, thank you for each of the members of the Washita Parish School Board. I pray that as they go through this school year, that their desires and decisions would align with your will, God, that every decision that they make for our schools is for your good, that even when they go through the valleys, that they would seek courage in you. God, you say in First John 4:4, "That you are greater than any giant we face." Lord, would we find comfort in that verse as we enter another school year with many giants ahead, knowing that you are so much greater? Help us to shine your light to those who need it most, Jesus, and to seek you in all that we do. It's in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Cards, up. Right. Face. Forward. Hearts. Cards. All. Cards, follow.
Good job. Board, we need approval of minutes for July 8th and July 16th. We have a motion, please.
I so move that we approve the minutes from July 8th to July 16th.
Motion in second. All in favor, yes?
Yes.
Any opposition? Motion, carry. We need to amend the agenda by deleting item number two and adding item number six on permission to bid. Need a motion to amend.
I so move we amend the agenda, deleting item number two and adding number six on their permission to bid.
Second. Motion in second. All in favor, yes?
Yes.
Any opposition? There's none. Motion, carry. Now, we need to approve the agenda as amended.
I so move we approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Second.
Motion in second to approve the agenda as amended. All in favor, yes?
Yes.
Any opposition? Motion, carry. Personnel report.
Real quick, Mr. Como, no new announcements, no new principals, assistant principals to announce, only a big thank you to Mr. Thompson and his team for the work they've done this summer, getting us ready to go this week. So, Jason, just appreciate all the work you and your group's doing. So, that's all I got.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Manley, we have any cards?
No cards today, Mr. Como.
No comment cards. Thank you, sir. Business number one, consideration approval of sound system for Richwood High School Stadium. Mr. McCoy?
Yes, I was asking the board to consider the approval of a sound system for Richwood High School Stadium. The system went out about a month ago, inadvertently, and was asking for it to be replaced using some of M&amp;O.
So, I guess I have a question. I don't recall, and I could be wrong, but I don't recall any of our schools previously using M&amp;O money to purchase, like, sound system. Usually that came out of, if I'm not right, Regina, did it come out of construction or something?
Yes, ma'am. Those typically comes out of construction.
Well, at Washita High School now, my gym and my football stadium years ago got replaced out of M&amp;O, and the only time my bond money paid for it is in my new football program, when I got a new press box. But football and gym was paid out of M&amp;O years ago.
Yeah, I just didn't recall any.
That's what M&amp;O was for.
Recently, I mean, like, last year we replaced.
M&amp;O was projects like this. I mean, we ain't got a lot of money left, it's bond money, we're trying to get new schools built, so I think M&amp;O ought to pay for this.
Okay. I will add, if we, it would be one or the other if, so, we went back five years and we didn't see any that had been out of general fund or M&amp;O, it was only construction. So, I know this has been brought up before with construction and with M&amp;O, it needs to be one or the other, so if we change it, then we would be changing all of the sound systems over to M&amp;O instead of just picking and choosing which ones came out of M&amp;O and which ones came out of construction.
On these sides of the river, if we didn't have a bond issue going right now, where would the money come from? We wouldn't have it, it would have to come out of M&amp;O. I mean, we're not gonna get on a bond issue for years now, because this is it. And if anything happens in the future, we ain't got the money, it's gotta come out of M&amp;O, you know, if anything but about it. So, I think we ought to take this out of M&amp;O.
Well, I was just curious, because I just was thinking back, you know, that's all. Yeah.
Well, as, I didn't know anything about beyond five years.
Yeah.
But I was, I was made aware of from 2020 to 2025.
Do you have funds?
How much is the bond, how much is the sound system, is it safe?
The sound system would be $60,000 for complete stadium replacement at Richwood High School.
I'd like y'all to think about it, consider it, and I think it's come out of M&amp;O.
Do you have any funds in your account that would pay for this otherwise?
I do.
You do?
I share this with you, as I stated before, those had been promised for another project, and the reason the money was still there is because I was asked not to expend it over a year ago, just in case there were some overruns or some, what do you call it?
Argument.
Thank you. And so, I said, fine, then we won't do that now, because I was asked by Ms. Regina not to, to just sort of hold it over just in case of some change orders.
Right, and that was back at the beginning of your projects, so to hold over to make sure you had anything for unforeseen contingencies, but now we're at the end of those projects and you still do have money left over in your account.
No, this was about a year ago or less, we were getting ready to do Richwood Middle Schools Pavilion, and then I wanted to do some additional stuff at Richwood High School, and I was asked not to.
Right, for, to, to cover any contingencies or change orders that might come up in the ongoing projects that you had at the time. I just ask that you not spend your budget all the way down, and then if a change order came up, that you wouldn't have funds available to cover those change orders, or in a case such as this, if you had needs that came up, that you wouldn't be over expended in your funds.
And I can say one more thing. We're using this bond money on these schools, it ain't going to waste. Every penny has been put on schools, so if we take a little penny amount of money out of M&amp;O for a sound system, it's not gonna hurt M&amp;O one bit, but the money he's got left over, he can do something else with his schools. So, you know, in my opinion, it comes out of M&amp;O.
Motion?
I so move.
I second.
Motion in second. All in favor, yes? We have a roll call, Ms. Micas.
Ms. May? Yes. Mr. Beatty?
Yes.
Mr. Hicks?
Yes.
Mr. McCoy?
Yes.
Mr. Graves?
Yes.
Mr. Manley?
Yes.
Mr. Como? Yes.
Thank y'all.
Thank you, board.
Item number three, considering select architect for sports area complex improvements for West Washita High School. Mr. Beatty?
I'd like to make a motion, I'd like to select TBA as the architect on that.
My second. We have a motion in the second. One standing, and Ms. May?
I have to excuse myself, right.
Not voting. All in favor, yes?
Yes.
Any opposition? There's none. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item four, policies for consideration, DFL 25, IFA 25, IBF BGA 25, JVD 25, JCVF 25, JDE 25, JGCE 25, JGCF 25. Mr. Honus Sucker?
Mr. Como, as Adam's coming to the podium, just wanna, again, remind you, Adam is taking over the work of the Policy Committee. Just wanna thank Jennifer Nichols in the room, I don't know if Carrie's in the room, they've been doing that, just trying to, or she is in the back, I see her, so, they've done such a great job over there. This pretty much falls under Adam's job description, so he's gonna be taking that over.
Well, good afternoon, board. In your package, you'll find copies of eight policies that the Policy Review Committee will be discussing tomorrow afternoon. These are kind of the first batch from what we call policy season, where we've got changes from the legislature and BESI. If you look at these eight policies, seven of them do reflect those legal changes that were made during this last legislative session, and then some from BESI. We also have one new policy that was created internally that we will be discussing. At this time, we are only asking that you consider these policies, and just a reminder that the PRC Committee will meet tomorrow at 11:00 AM to discuss these policies.
Right, you will vote in September whether to approve or disapprove.
What time is this meeting tomorrow?
11:00 AM.
11:00. And remind you, board members, you are welcome to attend. We have Ms. May and Mr. McCoy that's on the committee. You can attend and discuss, but we don't have a vote, so, thank you.
No problem. And before I step down, again, I just wanna thank, I wanna thank Ms. Nichols and Ms. May and Dr. Ferguson for them kinda helping me, you know, get my feet wet and get involved with this process. Ms. Nichols has been a very invaluable resource, and I also appreciate Ms. May and Dr. Ferguson for agreeing to continue to serve on this committee, so thank you.
Item number five, financial report. Ms. Micas, June 30th, 2025.
Good afternoon, board. If you look in your packets, you have the financial reports for the period ending June 30th, 2025. We're ending this period with a projected $20.4 million in fund balance in the general fund. I will make note of the deficiency of 2.2 million. We are not finished making accrued entries in the prior year. That will go through the end of the month of August, so those numbers will change a little bit before we get to the end of the year, and I'm not expecting to end the year with that deficit. If you'll look in M&amp;O, we have a fund balance of 28.7 million, ending the year with a negative 2.7 million. I know we've talked about this as we've been going through, and a lot of the expenditures that Esser Funds picked up, we're now coming back into M&amp;O and into the general fund, and that's what we're seeing now, so the loss in M&amp;O, those funds have been building up for the last few years, but we are starting to see that change. A lot of our curriculum programs come out of there. We've also, in the past year, replaced the track surfaces, we've purchased buses, and another item that comes out of here is retiree health insurance, and I know this year increased like $2 million. So, we will start to see those funds come down, just in our regular expenditures. If you look at the last column on page one, we have West Washita Sales Tax. We're ending the period with 19.5 million. That is a deficit for the year of 9.7 million, and again, the same, over the last five years, we had a long period of time where we were very conservative with those funds, just because of the unknown of the market, the unknown of what sales taxes would be, and then following that, we had supply issues. So, now, we have started spending those funds, so we have expected that fund balance to come down, and that's not a shock. That is all planned out progression. That's all I have. Mr. Como?
Questions, comments?
Just one question. So, we are redoing, you say, the tracks, we've redone all the tracks for all the high schools?
Yes, sir.
And what about the football fields?
Football fields, those are coming out of M&amp;O, so they are scheduled. I believe we have done...
Four of the five have been done in the last, Richwood's is up for next year, so, and then that will complete all the resurfacing, I mean, re-turfing of the field.
Have to test it again, right?
It'll be tested again.
It'll be tested, but it's gonna be replaced next year.
Yeah.
The one we just completed at West Monroe High School was West Washita, but it's not on schedule.
Yeah, and in M&amp;O, you have by voter approval. It's broken down into different categories, instruction, maintenance, capital projects, unfunded mandates, so the fund balance is not available just to use on all the projects. It's broken down into individual categories, and I will say, maintenance, we use every dollar every year. There's no surplus in maintenance funds in M&amp;O. Instruction, those funds have a little bit of a fund balance, but there are funds in instruction that carry a fund balance that we have set aside, such as the replacement of technology. We don't, we don't just go year to year with our fingers crossed, we actually have money set aside within that fund balance to cover improvements in classroom technology or replacement of classroom technology. So, all of those funds come together to make the M&amp;O budget. So, I know it looks like a large balance, but it's really a lot of smaller categories.
Okay, and they'll subdivide?
Yes, sir.
Hopefully, with the 12-year warranty that we're getting on the turf, our schedule will improve as far as how frequent we have to put new turfs down on all these fields.
You said there's a 12-year on it?
12-year.
Yes, sir.
I know, looking at the starting field, they've put sand on instead of rubber, so that's kind of a new technique I saw, so, I don't know if that was due to quality improvements or what.
Yes, sir, it's just a different technology, improved technology over what we've had in the past.
It's a different type of field we're putting down, and it's a cooling field, it's a light cooler than the black rubber that goes in on the field, so.
So, that's 12-year warranty?
On the last two fields that we've put in, the vendor that got it, and we, it's been a 12-year warranty, as opposed to what we've had in the past with 10?
Eight.
Eight, sorry, Jared would know.
But I know at Richwood, that's the only school, I think maybe Washita, we had the track redone, and we had some patches coming up.
Right, Jared has got a team that's been working on that to fix that, so, it's being addressed.
Thank you, Ms. Micas.
You're welcome.
Item number six, considering to select architect for roof replacement, West Monroe High School, West Washita High School, George Welch and Crowley Elementary. Mr. Hempel?
Good afternoon. I'd ask for permission from the board members in these districts to allow me to select architect for these schools. I recommend Architect Alliance to design our new roofing for these schools, and West Monroe High School and West Washita will be partial re-roofing on some buildings out there. George Welch will be complete replacement, and we don't know on Crowley yet, we gotta go out there and test the roof. I know we're gonna put new metal on the multipurpose room in that end there, for sure, but we'll get some tests once Architect Alliance goes through and looks at it, and that will be funded out of the M&amp;O fund, we have a roofing fund that that money comes out of. So, I recommend Architect Alliance for that.
I have a motion to accept the architect for replacement.
I move we accept Alliance.
Motion in second. All in favor, yes?
Yes.
Any opposition, no? There is none. Thank you.
Thank you, board.
Item seven, construction renovation projects report. Mr. Hempel?
In your handout, you can read through the items, it's been a really hot summer. We've been able to get a lot accomplished, we finishing up a lot of projects, we starting a few. If you got any questions, I'd be happy to answer anything you may have. I think all of y'all know your updates on your projects, it's throughout the parish. Any particular questions I could answer, I'd be happy to. If not, you can look over your handout, and, yes, sir?
No, I just wanna say, Stephen, I really appreciate, I mean, I really mean this from the bottom of my heart, your cooperation and support that you have, I know, given me in our projects and the work that's being done. You're able to do a lot with just a little bit, but it's looking really good, I appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you, and I know, me and Mr. Peters, we go out a lot together, and this summer, I think we had to, he went home and showered a couple times, 'cause he lives closer to town. Get soaking wet out there on some of these projects with that sun beaming down on you, so.
I'll say this, you know, I mean, I don't know how y'all do it, but every time I call, you guys are there on those projects, and I appreciate it, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
It's coming to an end, right?
Sir?
We're almost at the end, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Up at the fieldhouse.
Yes, they got the fieldhouse of, I mean, they got 625 on there, but they had some days added to the project, some weather days, but they getting close, finishing everything up.
So, it'll be ready for the first game.
Should be ready for the first game, aren't we? That's what we're hoping. I don't know about the, about the sound system, what day?
But we have a backup plan if it's not.
Backup plan for the sound system, so.
Holler.
You can let Daybo do that for you.
I got it.
Along the same lines, I see Todd Leonard here, like to thank him for all the scrambling that has to be done at the beginning of the school every year, we appreciate everything.
I actually had him on my list to mention, Todd waved, for everybody to see you back there hiding, I mean, I know no one calls and worried about their air, but I'm gonna tell you, his crew, his crew, they've been hopping all summer long, and certainly, as teachers report back, that seems to pick up a little bit, so, appreciate it, Todd.
All right, evaluation of bids, Mr. Peters?
Thank you, board, and thank you, Stephen, for letting everybody know I stay clean, so I appreciate that.
Look good, smell good, right?
Yeah, that's right. So, on evaluation of bids, first, we have bid number 30-25, that's Riser Middle Renovations and Improvements, requesting the board approve grindstone construction as the lowest responsive bidder, in the amount of $2,167,000. Funding source being West Washita Sales Tax.
I have a motion?
I made that motion.
Second? All in favor, yes?
Yes.
Any opposition? There's none.
Next, we have bid number 1-26, that's our copy paper bid, requesting the board approve three vendors, Veritiv, Staples, and Jackson Paper, as the lowest responsive bidders for the various bid items in the paper bid. Included in your handout, which vendor was awarded, specifically which item on that paper bid.
I guess we want to do each one of these separately, so I need a motion for that as well.
Sorry?
What'd you say?
I'm requesting the board approve Veritiv, Staples, and Jackson Paper as the lowest responsive bidders for that copy paper bid.
Motion approved.
I so move we approve. Lowest bidder per Mr. Jared's recommendation.
Second. All in favor, yes?
Yes.
Any opposition, no? There's none. I thought that's what you said.
All right, bid 2-26, that's Washita and Sterlington High School, baseball and softball field replacements, requesting the board approve Geo Surfaces as our lowest responsive bidder, in the amount of $4,289,000.
289 or 298?
298, yes, sorry about that.
I got a question.
Yes, sir.
The budget was $4,500,000, so we just a little bit over budget?
Right, so, so it's not actually over budget in what was allocated in the East Side Bond. We set a budget of $4 million, so we're actually under budget from the budget that we set on the East Side, on the East Side Bond, so, Ms. Regina, would you like to...
And you gonna give us police school costs, you gonna break it down?
Yes, yes, they are providing exactly how much of that $4,298,000 is Sterlington specific, and how much is Washita specific. There was some additional drainage work that had to be done at Sterlington, so it'd be a little bit higher.
All right, I have a question. Is it just a baseball field, or is it baseball and softball?
Baseball and softball.
Okay, okay, so roughly a million dollars per field, y'all?
Yes, sir.
Give or take.
Yeah, and that seems to be what it's been, and looking back at what we, what the bid was for West Washita's project, baseball and softball was just under $2 million, so.
I make a motion.
I'll make the motion, we approve the softball field replacements at Washita Parish High School, and baseball field replacements at Washita High School, and Sterlington High School, per the bids submitted.
Second. Motion in second. All in favor, yes?
Yes.
Any opposition, no? There's none. Thank you. Motion, period.
Bid 3-26, that's the property sale on Gordon Avenue. Unfortunately, we didn't receive any bids when we published that bid at 80% of the appraised value. I'm recommending to the board that we put this property back out for bid, and you'll see that under permission to bid, and set a bid floor of $9,950. The original appraisal was $17,700, and we may need to wait, I guess, to approve that when we do our permission to bid.
Any motion on that?
I think, I think it's gonna be under permission to bid.
Just gonna do it then there? Okay.
All right, and last, under evaluation of bids, 4-26, West Monroe High School Train Room Furnishings, requesting the board approve the vendor Henry Shine, and as the lowest responsive bidder, in the amount of $142,412.19.
Need a motion for this one?
I so move that we approve.
Second. Motion in the second. All in favor, yes?
Yes.
Any opposition? There's none. All right, permission to bid, Mr. Peters?
All right, would you like me to do these one at a time, or all together?
I'd like to do them all at once.
I'd like to take number one by itself.
One by itself.
Uh-huh.
All right, bid 6-26, Sterlington High School Classroom additions and athletic improvements, budget set of $6,650,000 with a fund of our East Side Bond.
I'll make a motion, we approve the permission to bid for Sterlington High School Classroom additions and athletic improvements per the East Side Bond proposal.
Motion in the second. All in favor, yes?
Yes.
You have a question? I'm sorry.
Is this the current bond that we're...
Motion in second. All in favor, yes?
Yes.
Any opposition? There's none. Thank you.
Jared, before we move on, I would like, I've talked to Stephen a little bit on timeline, and I know, I appreciate TBA working with me on this, as far as getting on this real timely, probably up and above the call of duty, and I appreciate the job that y'all done on this, and from the timeline, it looks like we're gonna put it out for bid this month, open the bids in September, and either start construction in October, November, is that correct, Clint? Okay. With hopefully completion by January, February of 2027, somewhere in there?
Or in late December.
Oh, late December? Okay, well, good, man, I gave y'all a little leeway. That sounds good.
Maybe a few days.
Okay, appreciate it, man. Thanks.
All right, bid 7-26, Washita Junior High Track and Athletic Improvements, set a budget of $800,000. Set a budget of eight hundred and ten thousand dollars, and the funding source being Eastside Bond. Then we have eight dash twenty-six, that's our, um, annual, uh, band instrument, uh, bid with a budget of a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. And then we have, uh, bid nine dash twenty-six, that is a property sale, uh, the Mineral Springs property. Um, that's ten acres of land off of, uh, Old Mineral Springs Road. Uh, it appraised for eighty thousand dollars, and so, uh, we are going to be putting that, uh, bid out for one hundred percent of the appraised value. Uh, ten dash twenty-six, Western Road High School training room equipment. Um, this is equipment that the training room was specifically designed to utilize, um, and is, uh, has plumbing and, and electrical, um, outlets, uh, specifically for, we're setting a budget of sixty thousand dollars for it, and the funding source being West Washita sales tax. And then what I mentioned earlier, bid eleven dash twenty-six, that's the property sale at Gordon Avenue, and, um, I'm requesting the bid to set a bid floor of nine thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars. And that's roughly, um, fifty-six percent of the appraised value.
Motion to grant permission to bid on these items? And a second? All in favor, yes?
Yes.
Yes.
It doesn't sell, we're gonna have a raffle on that garden rock?
Fingers crossed we can get it sold this time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jared.
Board, our next meeting will be held on Wednesday, September tenth, uh, due to meetings with Mr. Gass. Mr. Gass, you have a report?
Yeah, just, uh, really quick, uh, most of you know, we did start school yesterday. We're off to a great start. I, I could not, uh, leave this meeting day without thanking Curtis Page and his team, and a lot of them are sitting all over here for the work they've done the last, really, month and, and before then, but our new teachers really came in about three and a half weeks ago. Our employees all returned last week, and Curtis and his team, uh, led those efforts, and, and they're all over their day, and, and they do such a great job, and I appreciate them. We had a rally last Tuesday, Katie's sitting next to him, and she certainly organizes, and that is a big, big job, and, and all of that very, very well, really appreciate, uh, what they did as far as that. Uh, just a reminder, the finance committee does meet next Thursday, um, uh, on the twenty-first. Little side note, Westridge Middle School, for the ones of y'all that do not know, will be playing in the Superdome on August the twenty-fourth. Real special thing for them. Uh, really excited. I know the kids are really excited as well. And then I wanna end on this note, uh, the state, uh, did through legislative action, grant, uh, stipends to our employees in the amount of two thousand for certified and one thousand for support. Those stipends will, uh, must be expended before, uh, or in December of twenty-five. So Ms. Mekus and her team are planning to get those out, uh, the week we get out for fall break, so, be a good little, uh, little treat for our employees as they go on fall break, so, that's all I've got.
Are we selling CDs on Mr. Page's music from the workshops, or? No. No, a motion to adjourn? Second?
Second.